I want to bring to order the September 28, 2021 regularly scheduled board meeting for the Richland 2 Board of Trustees. I will say it now and I'll repeat it for the general session that Dr. Holmes sends her regards. She was watching her young grandchildren and any of us who have been around babies know sometimes those sicknesses will take us down hard. So unfortunately she has, does not have COVID, but she does have whatever a young child brings into the home, I feel for, I remember those days. So she will not be with us tonight. In the meantime, if I can have a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Mackey.
I move to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing student appeals, student admission requests into district's adult education program, and receipt of legal advice regarding board policy BID.
Motion's been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll take the vote. Motion passes unanimously. We'll now convene into executive session. Thank you. Reconvene September 28, 2021 regularly scheduled board meeting for the Richland 2 Board of Trustees. Couple of quick announcements. One, Dr. Holmes sends her regrets. As I stated before we went into executive session, she has been watching her grandchild and anybody who has watched my children knows what they can do to you when they pass those illnesses on. So we, we miss her, but we are glad she is not with us to help spread that love. So hope she gets better soon. The other comment is board members, I have been asked to make sure that you pull the mics close and that we speak up, particularly those of us that may have softer voices than others, so that the public can clearly hear what we're saying. So please make sure you pull your mics in. I may remind you of that if I don't see that occurring during the meeting. So with that, we will move on to the inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance. Ms. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the spirit of taking things one day at a time, I'm reminded of a book, Horton, Here's a Who, called We Are Here, and For That I Am Thankful. Teachers who continue to teach and continue to try, we are here. Students who continue to learn and to try. For employees who continue to work, to make the education system work. For bus drivers who continue to transport. For community that continues to persevere. For leaders who continue to persevere. For parents who continue to love, nurture, and guide children and families to support their children, we are here. This time last year, we weren't meeting face to face and there were so many other changes and nuances that we had to experience that were different from pre-pandemic times. For our perseverance, for your perseverance, thank you. Stay encouraged. We are here. If you please join me and stand in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I please have a motion for the adjournment of our executive session?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
I move that our minutes reflect that we adjourn the executive session at 6:14 PM this evening.
Motion's been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll have the vote at this time. Motion passes unanimously. We will next move on to approval of the agenda. If I can please have a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the agenda of the September 28, 2021 regular board meeting.
Motion's been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Agostini.
I'd like, I, I would like, I'll make a motion to remove item 10.5, Policy BEDC Quorum, and postpone the discussion until October 12, 2021.
Okay. The motion's been made by Ms. Agostini, a, a motion to amend the original motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Agostini.
Yes, at last week's September 22 meeting, both another board member and myself asked to have student appeals and student admissions added on to the September 22 board meeting agenda. And we were denied in an email from our board chair, Dr. Holmes, saying basically, board policy requires us to have three days' notice, unfortunately with your suggestion coming in at 6:00 PM on a Monday evening and the meeting being on Wednesday, this would not be possible according to our policy. To comply with policy, as Dr. Holmes has said, this is not a compliance, as we just received the request to have this added to the agenda yesterday. So that is not three business days prior to the board meeting. Thank you.
Other discussion? Ms. Agostini, I'd like to state that the, the policy does say that requests for additions to, additions to the agenda should be provided to the board chair and superintendent in writing three days prior, at least three days prior to the meeting. However, the board chair and superintendent do have the authority to add items as they see fit to the agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Agostini.
Or Vice Chair, excuse me. And thank you. I appreciate that. And that is exactly my point. And it's unfortunately, unfortunate when some of the leadership wants to comply with policy, it's prudent, but when others of us want to comply with policy, it's considered petty. And this is, and not permitting these items on the agenda last week was being petty to other board members when it was told it was such of importance. Thank you.
Ms. Agostini, I would like to say, I think that the word petty implies a subjective nature. In your opinion, that may be petty, but in others, to others, it may not. So I appreciate your, your comments. Any other comments?
Question, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
Just a point of clarification, the policy is no action requested, is it not?
Yes, ma'am. It is for information only.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, just to be clear, this is a motion made by Ms. Agostini to amend the original motion, which would delay item 10.5 per her request, seconded by Dr. Scott. If there's no further discussion, we'll have the vote at this time. And Jill, is that computer vote? Okay, thank you. And motion ties. If I'm correct, that means that it fails, correct? Yes, so motion ties.
You are correct.
Yes, so motion fails with a tie. So we are now back to the original motion that's on the table. Is there any discussion on the original motion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote on the agenda is stated by Ms. Mackey. Motion passes five yes, one no for the approval of the agenda. We will now move on to the next item, special recognitions. We delayed those tonight because we do not have the full board and they were, some of them, the recognitions were for the board, so those will be pushed to another agenda item. We'll now move on to item 6.1 approval, or item six, 6.1 approval of the consent agenda. If I can please have a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the consent agenda for the September 28, 2021 regular board meeting.
Motion's been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll have the vote. And while that's going on, public, can y'all hear us okay? Thumbs up, thumbs down? Thumbs up, okay. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. We next have public participation. We have several folks signed up. Are you ready? Okay, thank you. Mr. Larry Smith, if you please. I'm sorry. I should know better. Mr. Smalls, I apologize.
You see me all the time.
Yeah. Be careful what you see on the paper.
There you go. There you go. First of all, congratulations on your increase. I'm certain that you worked hard for it. But tonight I wanted to talk with all of you regarding a resolution that you printed out. And there were a few things in this resolution that kind of alarmed me as a parent. And I don't know, let me see, one, two, three, four, five, six. I think it's the sixth paragraph where it says, whereas local school boards and superintendents who ultimately bear the responsibility for the well-being of students regarding weighing their health. I take issue with that. Let me tell you why. Because the responsibility for the well-being of our children is the parent, not yours, not the board. Your responsibility is to be managers and facilitators, to make sure that the kids get a quality education without indoctrination, to make sure that the kids meet the requirements regarding state standards regarding their education level in order for them to be successful constituents in this state. That's it. The health issues, their well-being is my responsibility. I take that personally as a father, because I am a father of two kids. It's my responsibility to make sure that they're taken care of. Now, I can make your jobs a lot easier, because even though you're getting more income, doesn't mean that you're guaranteed more responsibility in this aspect. I feel that if you would just focus on managing and facilitating the district and making sure that the kids are getting a quality education and that they are safe on the grounds while they're in your care, I think everything will go smoothly. When you start getting into trying to make decisions regarding their health and their well-being, you're starting to act as a surrogate. My kids don't have surrogates. The only parent that you're gonna actually know for my children is me, Larry J. Smalls. I just said my name, not theirs. And I take that very personally and seriously. So again, I would, and I'm saying this as a parent, I see that you're starting to make decisions and choices that should be left for the parents, and that's an area where I do not want y'all going into. And I'm being very serious about this, because I know what's better. Until you're willing to provide room and board, work after hours and weekends, until you're willing to let them stay with you and sleep with you, you have no say-so regarding what's their well-being. You have no say-so regarding what is best for them. I know what's best for them, because I'm teaching them and I'm training them, I'm developing them. You're giving instruction, I'm leading by example. Big difference. So I wanted to share that with you. It also talks about need flexibility. No, all you need is clarity and stability. The clarity is coming from me. I provide the stability for you so that you can make the best choices while they are in your care. And finally, you don't make decisions for my kids. I do. I'm the father. I'm accountable, I'm responsible. I will not let you respectfully, because I know half of you, really all of you, I will not let you or anybody abdicate or take my role as a father regarding raising my kids. I know what's best for them. Your job is clear, according to your policy. I would appreciate if you stick with that, and I believe if we could do this together as a team. Richland School District would be a good district to be working with.
Thank you, Mr. Smalls. Thank you, sir. Next, we have Gary Jen. Jen.
Thank you all for, for listening to us today. And I appreciate you letting us talk to you. I'm gonna read part of this, something that's very dear to my heart and that the founders of this country wrote, that we hold these truths to be self-evident, and all men and women are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator, whoever that, they think that might be, within certain inalienable rights that are among, these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And that to secure these rights of happiness, that to secure these rights, government are instituted among men deriving their powers from the consent of the government. Well, I am not going to give either any of y'all or anybody, Mr. Davis or anybody, consent to, to govern my children and tell them that they have to be mandated to wear masks and, and take shots and do any of this. Their health is my responsibility, mine and my wife's only. And I don't know where this idea came from, that the government and the school board and all this controls that. God brought him into this, brought my son into this world, and when it's our time, mine and my wife and my time, when it's our time to go, then guess what? He'll take us out. And that's hard for some people to understand, but you know, we don't hold, we don't hold our future in our hand. God holds our future in our hand. So no, I would, I would just ask one thing, is when was this written up? When, when did y'all come up with this? I mean, is your right to, to put a mask on my, my son or to vaccinate him? To, staff need flexibility. Staff flexibility to what? Y'all are in the education business. You're supposed to be teaching him the history and math and, you know, reading, writing, and arithmetic. Where, where did y'all come up with this? Do your job.
Thank you. Mr. Gus Philpott.
Thank you, members of the board and superintendent. My name is Gus Philpott. On or about September the 15th, there was an article in the state newspaper in which reporter Lucas DePriel wrote about the chair's position with the Fairfield County School District. Knowing that to be incorrect, I emailed the district's Public Relations Director on September 15th and asked for the chair's online bio to be updated. Later that evening at 10:57 PM, the following email was sent to me with copies to Mrs. Roof, the superintendent, and all the other board members. And I quote, "Gus, I have often tolerated you hateful remarks and email. However, this time you have gone too far. I lost my husband, Reverend Dr. Jacob A. Holmes Jr. four years ago, which I know you are fully aware of. I will no longer tolerate nor concern myself with your continuous diatribe of falsehoods and insults. After this message, you are officially blocked from further contact with me. Go spout your hate on those who care about you and what your deceitful, lying mouth has to say. Do not contact me again or include me in your racist, hateful, lying remarks or emails. It is sad that someone of your advanced age is not concerned about your mortality and relationship with God. I pray that God will forgive your outright evilness and have mercy for your pitiful soul. It has to be hard working on being so evil." Signed, widower, Dr. Teresa Holmes. End of quote. State law dictates that all official emails are subject to open records laws. They are to be retained and subject to FOIA. Since November the 18th, 2018, the chair has been allowed to use her personal Gmail account for official business. This means that she can delete some or all emails without oversight. I request that the board direct administration to create a Richland 2 email address for the chair and to direct her to use only it for all official email. The district should also gain control over her Gmail account to avoid deletions and closing of that account while it contains any official email. The last thing I'd like to comment is on the minutes for the November 20, September 22nd meeting. The minutes were incorrect in a substantial way. The minutes say the meeting was called to order. The meeting was not called to order. If you look at the video, the chair forgot to call the meeting to order. The board went into executive session, which is illegal, because there was not an official meeting. And I ask you to examine that and take the necessary steps to correct it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Philpott. Renee Lucido.
Hi. I hope you'll have some grace with me, because I've never done this before and I'm not a public speaker. So I'm here because of what I witnessed at the last two meetings, and I thought it was very dysfunctional. I was going to share the videos on Facebook, but I was too embarrassed as a South Carolinian. I have friends out of state. I want you to know how the average citizen saw that. And it's my job as an informed voter to speak the truth to power when necessary, and transparency is even more imperative when there have been and still are ethics, the situations that I've read about online. Now, I'm not gonna say everything I read online is true. I don't know. I'm just starting to become aware of these things. But if they're not true, then they need to be explained, I think. I want to thank the board members who left rather than compromise their principles on voting on the issue they weren't supplied with and timely information on. They tried their best to obtain it, but were cut off by the chair, and I don't understand why. Their requests and compromises sounded reasonable. I'm surprised that the other four didn't walk out too. I can only surmise that they had the required information or they didn't care enough to be informed. I have many questions. What was the need to accomplish this contract in such a hurried fashion? It doesn't expire till 2024. Salary to me, I mean, it's seven times the per capita income of this district. It's more than what our governor and state superintendent make combined. And one of the highest superintendents in our state. We aren't close to the top ranking district, and South Carolina ranks 48th in the country, and the cost of living is relatively low. So it's, it appeared to me as a lack of accountability or concern with how taxpayer dollars are spent. I submitted my questions via email. I received a reply from the chair that didn't answer any of my questions, but rather was a perceived veiled attack on my character. I thought that was an outrageous way to treat a voter. What, what we're doing, when we're redoing a contract that increases salary and benefits, it would be wise to include your reasons. What are the metrics and the performance measures that were exceeded? What are the new expected outcome standards to be met? I understand leadership is a hard job and not everybody has the gift. It requires the desire to, it requires excellent knowledge of your job, outstanding ability to communicate, fostering a collegial and collaborative environment, respecting people.
Ms., I'm sorry. Your three minutes is up. I apologize. Thank you for your comments. No, it's no need to be embarrassed. It's the three minutes comes up quickly. Thank you. That concludes our public comments. We will now move on to our next agenda item, which is our executive session items. If I can have a motion on student appeals, please.
Mr. Chair.
Dr. Scott.
Vice Chair. I'd like to make a motion for student number one.
Dr. Scott, can you, will you just lean into the mic a little more, please? I'm sorry. Thank you.
Is that better? For student number one, Blythewood Academy for 90 days. Student number two, Blythewood Academy for the standard amount of days. Student number three, Blythewood Academy for the standard amount of days. And if we could vote on those, because I'm going to lump four, five, six, and seven, or should I go ahead and do that now?
No, ma'am, just if, if you don't mind, just do the one through three and then we'll deal with the others later.
Yes.
Thank you. So the motion's been made by Dr. Scott. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Agostini. Any discussion? All right, and we will give Jill a few minutes to catch up. The board secretary has one of the toughest jobs in the room. Thank you, Jill. Ms. Agostini. Dr. Scott, if you'll just make sure that's accurate.
Yes.
Okay. If there's no discussion, we will have the vote at this time. Motion passes unanimously. Dr. Scott?
Yes. Students four, five, six, and seven make a motion that they return, well, that we, I make a motion that they attend Blythewood Academy for the standard amount of days.
All right. Motion's been made by Dr. Scott. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Agostini. Any discussion? All right. We will wait for the motion to be on, to be presented on the screen. Dr. Scott, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. If there's no discussion, we'll have the vote. Motion passed. Motion passes five yes, one no. Next, I'll have entertain a motion on student admission request into the District's Adult Education Program.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Dr. Scott?
I'd like to make a motion that we grant student number one admission into the District Adult Education Program.
Motion's been made by Dr. Scott. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Agostini. Is there any discussion? All right. Well, no discussion. Motion passes unanimously. No need for item 8.3. There's no other items that need addressed by the Board at this time out of executive session. We'll now move on to 9.1, Certification of Delegates for the 2021 School Boards Association Delegate Assembly. I will take nominations for those positions now.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Dr. Scott?
I'd like to nominate LaShonda McFadden as a delegate for Richland II.
All right. I have a nomination for LaShonda McFadden. Ms. McFadden, are you okay with that nomination? Okay. Other nominations or volunteers? I need at least two more. I'd like to have at least one more delegate and an alternate.
Mr. Chair, I'm happy to nominate myself.
Okay, Ms. Agostini. So I now have two, and I need at least one alternate.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I nominate myself.
Dr. Caution Parker is our alternate. All right. Last chance for any other folks that would either like to serve or nominate someone for our Delegate Assembly going once.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. McFadden?
I'd like to nominate Dr. Holmes, even though she's not here. Can she, can we do that?
We can. I would like to not nominate somebody who's not here, just in case they have a conflict or don't want to serve. Not to disregard that, but it's just awkward when there's not, they're not here to state they would like to do that. Can we maybe put her as another alternate?
That's fine.
Okay. We'll put her as a second alternate. I'll take that. All right. Any other nominations or suggestions? Okay. So just to be clear, we have Ms. McFadden. We have Ms. Agostini is primary, each which will have five votes because we have a total of 10. And we have alternates is Dr. Caution Parker and Dr. Holmes. And with that, we will need to vote on that. So that's the motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Scott. Dr. Scott, yeah, we're going to put you as the motion. Sorry. It's a little bit awkward. So, all right, Dr. Scott essentially will carry the motion, so I need a second.
Can I second it?
Sure, yes.
All right. Second.
Perfect. Any discussion on that? All right. And motion passes six yes, zero no, unanimous. Thank you. And next, we have the Resolution Regarding Proviso 1.108. If I could have that read out loud by Ms. Mackey.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Mackey.
It raises follows. A resolution of the Richland School District II Board of Trustees urging the South Carolina General Assembly to repeal 2021-22 Budget Proviso 1.108. Whereas, South Carolina is among the top 10 states in the nation having the highest number of COVID-19 cases per capita, averaging 5,500 cases a day. And whereas, the South Carolina Children's Hospital Collaborative recently stated that the number of children ages 0 to 17 in the state requiring hospitalization, including critical for COVID-19, is rising at an alarming rate. And whereas, in Richland School District II, the number of students and staff who have tested positive so far this year is more than 1,100, which has resulted in a quarantine of more than 4,000 students and staff. And whereas, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, recommends universal indoor masking vial students ages 2 and older, staff, teachers, and visitors to K through 12 schools, regardless of vaccination status. And whereas, the South Carolina Department of Health and Environmental Control, DHEC, strongly recommends universal masks wearing for teachers, staff, and parents in school. And whereas, local school boards and superintendents who ultimately bear the responsibility for the well-being of students and staff need flexibility, not limitations, when carefully weighing health and safety guidance at the local, state, and federal levels to make decisions for the students and staff in their communities. And whereas, local school district leaders are best positioned to monitor and modify safety protocols and make the best decisions to keep students and employees safe. And whereas, mitigation measures are vitally important to maintain in-person, full-time education to ensure students do not fall behind scholastically or socially. And whereas, Proviso 1.108 serves as a barrier for school district leaders to consider every recommended mitigation measure available for the protection of the health and safety of students and staff. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Richland School District II Board of Trustees by this resolution strongly urges members of the South Carolina General Assembly to reconvene immediately and repeal Proviso 1.108. Be it further resolved, that copies of this resolution are being furnished to members of the Richland County Legislative Delegation and communicated to our parents, businesses, and school supporters. And there's a place for adoption this 28th day of September 2021.
All right. The resolution has been read by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a motion on the table to approve the resolution?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the same.
All right. Ms. Mackey has made the motion to approve the resolution. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Agostini?
My question would be if it was repealed and the decision ultimately became the District's decision, who would be making the choice? Would it be a board decision or would it be an administrative decision?
Ms. Agostini, we have allowed administration, we've deemed this to be an administrative decision, and administration would make the decision.
Thank you. And just for the record, this will not be something that I'll support. I'm okay with the General Assembly reconvening to discuss it, but I'm not an advocate of repealing it. I too side with the parents that think it's a parent decision. I, for one, wear a mask when I walk into these schools, when I'm on the school bus. But I do not want to be the person, the elected official, setting that doubled standard that is requiring it of everybody else, but then is seen outside at some other place not wearing a face mask. So this will not be something that I'll be supporting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Agostini. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Mackey?
I'd like to make it clear that we have no control. This Board bears no control over whether or not the General Assembly returns. As a matter of fact, the Senate, the President of the Senate has canceled any discussions regarding Proviso 1.108 right now. We don't know what'll happen before they get to session. We have no control as to whether or not the legislative body will rule on our, it's a resolution. It's not a bill. It's not a law. It's an act. It's a show of good faith that I personally am not okay with the government of our state tying our state funding to local school board decisions. This is not about masks versus not masks. This is about the ability for school districts to make decisions for what is best for them. If you're talking about parents, partnership with parents and leadership, then that decision needs to be as close to the school district and local level as possible. So I'm not in favor of anything that the school, that the legislature or the Governor would mandate decisions that we make and tie it to our school funding. It's just, doesn't make sense to me. It's incomprehensible.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. Other discussion? Dr. Scott?
Vice Chair. Just for clarification, this policy that we're, resolution that we're getting ready to make.
Resolution, Dr. Scott. Resolution.
I'm pleased. I'm sorry.
Is this only for our students and faculty and staff, or is Board included in that decision?
This resolution that we've read would ask for a rescinding of the proviso that prevents us from having a mask mandate. It in no way, shape, or form states how the implementation or what the requirements of the school district would be should that proviso be undone. That's a combination of Board policy and administrative decisions that are separate from this, from this resolution.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear because if we go in that direction and it is approved where we are mandating that students and faculty and staff wear masks, I hope we put the same requirements on the school board so we can lead by example and that we all wear a mask just to show unity and to lead by example. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Scott. Other comments? I also want to state that for me, this is much about the state legislature overstepping their bounds with local, when it comes to local school boards and how we utilize the funds that are entrusted to us. And at the point to Dr. Scott's comments, if this were to be, if this were to be repealed, then we would have decisions within the district as to how we, whether or not we mandate masks or how we enforce that policy, which is separate from this. So with that, if there's no further discussion, we'll have the vote on the resolution. Motion passes four yes, one no, and one abstention. Next, we have new business, no action requested. We have a back-to-school report. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, and to the members of the Board, to our viewing public and to our public attendance and attendance, it gives me great pleasure to provide for you at this Board meeting, the September 28th, 2021 regular scheduled Board meeting, a, the 2021 Superintendent's Back-to-School Report. So let's begin to share a little information with you regarding the return to school. District-level areas of focus for the 21-22 school year. Over the years, we have referred to these as priorities, goals, and/or even initiatives. No matter what they have been labeled, there are some of the key actions that propel us along the pathway to being premier. Is this all that we do, or is this all that we're doing or focusing on? Well, the answer to that is clearly no. But these are the activities, the initiatives, or commitments we are calling special attention to this year. And at the top of this list, it's doing the things as we have determined to be the premier way. So what's the premier way? Of course, as you can see clearly pronounced on the presentation, it is the return to the core values of our school district. And we've asked our staff, our students, our administration, and our community to commit or recommit themselves to our core values. I will delve a little deeper into the premier way farther into this presentation, but for now, let's start with what we know about being premier. Premier starts here. It starts in your heart, and it starts in your mind. It starts in the hearts and minds of each individual member of the Richland II family. That includes all of our students, our parents, our community members, business partners, our administration, teachers, employees, staff workers, our Board. It starts with all of us. It starts in our hearts, and it starts in our minds. Premier is indeed a very simple concept. It is a mindset. It is understanding that we are constantly striving to be the best versions of ourselves. It is indeed a work in progress for each individual and for the entire organization. It's a constant striving, a constant work toward being the best versions of ourselves. Premier means demonstrating excellence in the practice of our core values, as well as the application of our principal practices and the achievement of our universal goals. And the premier way starts this year by doing one or two things. Simply committing yourself or recommitting yourself to our core values. The values of learning, the values of character, the value of community, and the value of So let's look at learning. We've often said in our district that learning is the cornerstone of the four values. Prior to the pandemic, we were moving in a positive direction with a great trajectory when it came or comes to student achievement in our district. The pandemic unfortunately has interrupted that progress, but it did not completely derail the strategies and the structures that we put in place and currently have in place. We must continue to implement Abbott district-wide, and with that, establish the expectations of what it means for our students to have a Richland II premier educational experience. We must recommit to strategies that inform instruction for improved achievement and that will require us doing all that we can do to protect instructional time. As I stated earlier this year and late last year, when there was a lot of conversation around loss of learning, we adopted the philosophy in Richland II that we lost instructional time. It has been standard to understand that 180 days of instruction should equal one year of academic growth. And one way to ensure that you see academic growth is through what we call A, T, and T. Alignment to the standards and indicators of learning. Teaching, that's the 180 days of direct instruction. And time, the amount of time you have. And so we've put strategies and things in place to manipulate those variables or manipulate those things and not see them as constants, but see them as variables to be manipulated. So alignment to teaching, time, and teaching. Those are the focuses for our school district, but we have to protect instructional time. We must expand our middle school career and technology opportunities. And we put some strategies and have began the process of looking and developing and working collaboratively with organizations to expand our career and technical opportunities for all middle school students in our district. Those are just a few things that we're doing as relates to learning in our school district. The right way, the Richland II way, the premier way. So that brings us to character. If learning is the cornerstone, then character has to be the heart. The premier way involves all four core values, but at the, but at the heart of the premier way is asking ourselves, are we doing things the right way? The Richland II way, the premier way, when nobody's watching, because that's what character is all about. So when we know no one is watching, what are we doing? We're providing premier learning experiences for our students as well as our employees. We have to demonstrate premier character all the time. When things are good, when things are challenging, when things are bad. Your character speaks to how you act and how you behave, and we have to demonstrate that for one another as well as for our students if we expect them to do the same thing. We have to invest in our community, our classroom communities, our school communities, our district community. What are the roles and the efforts and the actions we're taking to show that we're investing in one another? That we're investing in the future of our school district, the future of our community? What are the actions that demonstrate investment? And we have to create conditions where joy can reside for others. And I'll speak a little bit more about that in the last of our four squares. So we have learning, which we said is the cornerstone. We have character, which we say is the heart. And then third... And then third, we have a recommitment or commitment to community. So community then has to be the lifeline of our school district. This is where we get our energy from. This is where we get our support from. Our community has to be the lifeline of our school district. What are some of the things that we're doing this year to demonstrate our commitment to our community? Well, one, we have started a comprehensive salary study. This comprehensive salary study will be conducted by an outside company. And we hope to have the results back in time to utilize the data when developing our next general fund budget. This salary study is to address some issues that we know exist for some of our workers and employees in our school district. We have managed through COVID. One of the things I want to reemphasize that this district, along with the leadership of this board, has done that often gets forgotten about. Not one employee lost their job during COVID. Not one was, was let go. That means everyone had healthcare and health insurance during a global pandemic as a result of the leadership of this board and this administration. We fed and ensured that all students ate during the pandemic. And not just students, we partnered with local, other local leadership, like the public library, ensured that the elderly were also fed. And many of our employees and board members stood in line and participated in feeding the elderly when the others had forgotten and were running to the supermarkets and buying up all of the supplies and foods. We were here taking care of the community. We provide supplies for our students when they need them. We ensured that we provided counseling services to our students throughout the year by going on buses, going out into communities, meeting them in the parks, providing them with the resources that they needed to be successful during global, during the global pandemic, in home visits, reaching out to our military community as they were making their transitions from their former stations here to Richland School District Two. And the list goes on and on and on about the things that this school district, that this board and this community did to show that we are invested in the community, the lifeline. If you could have asked me last year, would we be back here this year? I would say 100% confidence. And emphatically, I would have said, there was no way. But unfortunately, we started this year again facing substantial challenges and hurdles caused by the pandemic. I would say that there is no group, no team, no school district, no family, no department, no individual, no other students, employees, and communities that would have rather faced those challenges with than the Richland Two family. And I'm proud to stand side by side with all the individuals who make up the Richland Two family as we strive to provide premier educational experiences for our students, premier working environments and experiences for our employees, and taking care of our community. Our team is the team to do, to do this. This is a team who will do it. And I have no doubt that we will have, be successful in all that we do this year because we are premier, we are striving continuously to be the best versions of ourselves. As we continue to examine what we've done as far as helping our community, we've hosted vaccine clinics, have been held in partnerships with medical partners. In the spring of 2021 for our employees, held with Providence Health. The summer of 2021, anyone in the Richland Two community with an emphasis on students 12 and older, we've held, we had a vaccination held, clinics held with Prisma Health. And coming in October, October of 2021, Prisma Health will have a mobile unit that will be at all five of our high schools from the times of 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM. On October the 11th, they'll be at Blythewood High School. On October 12th, they'll be at Richland Northeast High School. October 14th, Ridgeview. October 15th, Spring Valley. And October 18th, they will be at Westwood High School, providing vaccines for those families and students who are looking to have the option for vaccination. Open and eligible to students, to the staff, and to our community members. We'll be sharing this information about the schedules and opportunities and appointments at a later date. Some more updates about COVID-19 and particularly our dashboard. And I know it's a little bit difficult to see the dashboard. We made some changes to our dashboard. One important change is to our dashboard is to inform our community so that you are a better and more informed community. It's the new cumulative data added to the dashboards. A second page provides graphs that quickly show you which are our numbers or which of our positive, active positives and active quarantines over time. So you'll see the active positives and active quarantines over time. That very first slide that you see is the total active positive students and employees. You can see where we started and where we currently are as well as the total active quarantine students and employees. And we've already talked in depth about understanding quarantines and how particularly for our parents who want to ensure that their sons and daughters can avoid quarantine, what are the necessary steps that you can do to increase the likelihood that your child would not be identified as a close contact? So that he or she can stay in school because it goes back to the first square of learning and ensuring that we are protecting instructional time. Because we've, we know that it's important for the students to be in school face to face if they are going to be successful academically this year. Because remember, it's about alignment, it's about teaching, and it's about time. That is what's going to help us when it comes to our students' achievement. Now, when you look at this data, you can clearly see that we're trending in a very good direction with the strategies that we have in place. But it is important for us to stay vigilant and not look at this data and get complacent and say that we can't stop or we need to stop the practices that we have in place. That's not specifically or just to our public. That's also the message that we are sending to our students and to our administrators and to our teachers. It's one of the reasons why I visit schools to ensure and see what are some of the challenges that we're facing, but also to provide the necessary support to the staff in order for them to continue the practices of putting these mitigating strategies in place so that our students and teachers can stay in school. So we have to continue to encourage one another to do the things necessary so that we can stay in school. We can disagree on many things, but what I know we all agree on is the importance of having our students in classes every single day. And in front of them is a highly qualified and certified teacher who is healthy and able to deliver premier instruction for those students. Continue with community, as you can see, we've done a lot with community at the start of this year. We will hear more about our facilities and our facilities improvements a little later from our capital improvements update that Mr. Anderson will provide. But for now, I just want to say that the 21-22 school year has started out in a big way in terms of our facilities. We held the ribbon cut, ribbon cuttings for our new competition stadiums at Ridgeview and Richland Northeast High School back in August. Those stadiums are phenomenal. Again, I want to take the opportunity to thank those, our public for supporting. A very important bond referendum that not just allowed us to have athletic and competitive stadiums, but to upgrade our technology and our security, to provide us with buses to ensure that we have the comprehensive learning spaces that we need that are 21st century geared to ensure that our students are receiving premier educational experiences. We're truly blessed in this district. And I can't, I'm remiss if I did not thank our public for allowing us to continue to pass that blessing on to our students. In December of 2021 and in, or January of 2022 of this school year, we will celebrate the groundbreaking of the Richland Two Performing Arts Center here on the R2I2 campus. And we are extremely excited about the groundbreaking of that new stated art facility, which is long overdue for this community of outstanding performing arts students that we have had a long tradition of having. Now let's take a little bit, a, a look at our enrollment data. Now for a little sidebar so that we can include some of the, some of the stats that we always include in our back to school reports. Let's take a look at our community by the numbers. So we updated this slide after the pupils in poverty data was updated on Friday, September 24th with a file from the South Carolina Department of Education. And you can see our current enrollment. As of 9/28/21 sits at 28,261 students compared to our 90-day enrollment of last year, which was 27,965. We have roughly 55.9% of our students are identified as PIP students, which stands for pupils in poverty. Saying that 44% of our students are now identified as non-pupils of poverty. 17.9% of our students identify as white. 5.4% identify as mixed. Our Hispanic population continues to grow and it is now identified. We have 12.2% of our students now identify as Hispanic. 2.8% of our students are identified as Asian. And 61.2% of our students are identified as African American, identify as African American. And .6 identify as other. Our communities by the numbers. Certified staff is at 22,004, 2,204. Support staff is at 1,1310. Administrator staff is 183 for a total of 3,679 staff, support staff, and administrator staff in our school district. 97, I'm sorry, apologize. 3,697. So in case you just get asked, here's some fun facts. We've served over half a million meals, about 27,700 Chromebooks distributed. You can see our pupil, our, our PPE distribution to schools this year, 15,000 desk shields, 60,000 masks to students, 60,000 masks to employees. Vaccinated individuals who avoided quarantine. At this time, as of 9/23/21, 487. Employees who have submitted vaccination verification. That number continues to rise with 1,697. Total number of miles traveled by school buses per day, 11,483. Current, currently employees currently employ 130 drivers for 127 buses. And we just saw a report about our efforts to recruit more bus drivers. Will be fully staffed with 148 full-time bus drivers. We aim for more drivers than routes in order to have substitute drivers, relief drivers, and to use our district buses to help shorten routes. Use these resources, using these resources to cut down on late buses. Saturday bus fair was a huge success and received more than 60 applicants at that, at that recruitment fair. Our starting salaries for our bus drivers is $16.36. And bonuses for new drivers are $1,500. With CDLs is $2,250. Our starting salary is higher than many of our neighboring school districts. My staff put the districts in, but I won't call them out by name in our report. They don't deserve any airtime in our, in our, in our meeting. And the last thing that I'll focus on, which is one of my favorite things to focus on. And I always give credit to Dr. Hamm for the four squares. When I became superintendent, the four squares were already embedded in our school district, learning, character, community, and joy. And I thought it was essential that they remain as a part of our school district and specifically joy. And we have talked about in our efforts to commit or recommit ourselves to learning, character, community, and joy, the importance of joy. We don't have the ability to give you joy. No student, no staff, no administrator, no parent, no business leader. We don't have the ability to give you joy. That's not our responsibility. But what our responsibility is, is to work together to create conditions where joy can reside in our schools. To work together to create conditions where joy can reside in our communities. To work together to create conditions where joy can reside in our homes. Our responsibility to one another is to work together to create conditions where you can bring your joy with you and that joy can be impactful on others. So how do we create those conditions where joy can reside? By being kind and respectful and understanding and inclusive and diverse in our practices. To be meaningful and purposely working to help one another. We work together to create conditions of joy. And one of the ways we're doing that is last year, we provided a value survey for our, for our employees. We wanted to ask our employees, what do you value? We don't want to assume that these are the things that they value. We wanted to hear from them specifically. What are things you value that you should experience in your day-to-day interactions at school? Now how then we take that data and work to begin to create the conditions where their employees feel and students feel affirmed and appreciated? Where they're, where those then, that conditions of joy is created and it can reside right in our schools? That's our entry, that's our re, I'm going to say re-entry, our back to school report. I appreciate your time listening. I know it took a little long, but we've been waiting to give this report for a while. And I wanted you all and our community all to really understand the importance and the work, the important work that we're doing here in the district to ensure that everyone is receiving that premier educational and work experience. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, and to our community members.
I'm going to open it up to comments, and Ms. Mackey's already raised her hand. So Ms. Mackey.
Mr. Vice Chair, thank you for recognition. Just for the, in the spirit of keeping the main thing, the main thing. Dr. Davis, thank you for that report. I don't have a whole lot of detailed questions to ask. I ask you questions all the time and you provide feedback and I appreciate that. But for the 3,697 employees who make this district work, thank you. Every day is not perfect. Every situation is not perfect. There's good, bad, and ugly when you're working. But for the 3,697 employees who, who come to work and show up every day and are trying to work in the midst of a pandemic, the main thing right now is that we are trying to educate students. The end user for the product that we are all advocating for here is students. So for trying to educate students in the midst of a global pandemic, that it's unprecedented, thank you for those employees. There are too many to thank one by one. Thank you for Dr. Davis, executive staff, teachers. Just thank you for what you are doing. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you. Other comments from board members? Ms. Agassini?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Davis, for your report. I was glad to hear that we're going to be offering more vaccination clinics. My question was going to be, as it pertains to that, the dates that you set, are those weekdays or weekend?
If you could look at the days, they are weekdays.
Okay, great.
Because they're in sequential order with the exception of the last day. So I believe they are weekdays and think they're set from 1 to 5. So that would give the students some time after school to get vaccinated.
All right, excellent. I just wanted to make sure if there was a transportation problem that the kids can get it while they're at school so they've got the ride there and the ride home. My question, you, you talked about, under the avid section, about improving achievement. What metrics are we using to determine whether achievement hasn't been improved? I mean, if there's been approved achievement?
The metrics that administration uses to look at how our students are performing are multifaceted as we examine their success academically. One of the main metrics, of course, is to, is what the State Department of Education use, SC Ready, SC Pass. But that's just typically in one, one or two different systems of evaluating student performance. We also look at growth through our students' MAP data. We also look at our benchmark data, which tells us what our students know as it relates to the indicators of learning that we are supposed to be instructing our students on. We also look at other measures that could impact student achievement. So we try to account for issues of poverty, absenteeism, transition, students being transient. There are a number of factors that we look at. Graduation rates is another factor that we, we can, we look at as far as student success. As I stated previously, on many occasions, we want to be an achievement-oriented organization. We don't want to limit ourselves to simply looking at test data as a way to determine our student's success because we do realize that there are many factors that, that has. Because we do realize that there are many factors that imply that has an impact on that. One of the things that we clearly have seen, as I stated in the presentation, and we will have a more detailed presentation about our achievement in an upcoming board meeting. You can clearly see after the implementation of certain programs such as benchmarks, you can see our district project, projection or projectory moving in a positive direction as a more and more students were achieving. For three, almost three consecutive years. Then you had COVID and the impacts of COVID on the student and student performance and how greatly of an impact that is. We clearly realize as a result of that, the importance of having our students in schools and the importance of them not, but the importance of them being in class face to face. Because the level of engagement when they are not in the building is low and we have to have them in our buildings. But those are some of the metrics that we will continue to look at and use as we make decisions. They inform us both summative and formative assessment, uh, measures.
My next question, thank you for sharing that information of what we look at. Do we set goals prior to each school year, um, saying what we expect or what we hope for the SC Ready, the SC Pass, any of those? Is there any, um, defined measurement of what we expect or hope to receive or the student performance prior at any school year?
Upon assuming the role of superintendent in 2020, in 2017, we redid our strategic plan. Uh, that strategic, strategic plan was presented to the board. And that strategic plan, you will see a progression of expectations of student performance based on the, based on the baseline data of the, prior to the year of implementing the strategic plan. That's an SC Ready as well as an SC Pass. That also is, uh, data that was, uh, regarded to end of course examinations as well. So we've always had an expectations of where we would achieve. For the previous years from 17, 18 and 19, we've exceeded all of those, all those data points with the exception of going into, um, the year of COVID. And I couldn't speak specifically, I don't want to speak too much in details, um, and give the wrong information. And then, uh, so I, I will just, uh, I encourage you to take a look at the strategic plan and the information regarding, uh, where, um, the, the benchmarks, the baseline data and then the expectations of growth. We have now, in addition to that, have also implemented other, some other practices to help us with setting goals. One is a graduation rate, uh, team at all of our high schools. Uh, we have set specific goals at every, for the elementary levels and middle school levels as it relates to ELA or reading and mathematics.
All right, thank you. Uh, and my final question is, last year we received, um, and I think it was during this presentation, I might be wrong, but the employee demographics. Is that something that will be forthcoming to us?
I can, if, if that's something that the board would like to have more information, we can put it in a broad brief, providing with the demographics of our, of our employees. I can tell you the vast majority of, as you all are probably all aware, the vast majority of our teaching ranks are women, uh, and are white. We are having effort to recruit and retain more men of color into the classrooms. We also, um, but our, our teaching demographics, our employee demographics does not mirror our community demographics nor our student demographics. But we can provide that information, uh, in a board brief to share with the, uh, with the board, uh, in an upcoming, upcoming briefing.
Thank you. I would like to see it.
Other comments from board members? Um, Dr. Davis, to, to echo, uh, Ms. Agostini, I, I think I would like to see that report that she's asked for added to our, um, performance report that we get on an annual basis. I, I think that we have talked about the fact that, um, that our, our staff makeup does impact student, um, student progress in a lot of ways is they are, have access to, um, members of the community that, uh, that in some cases share culture and other cases share, um, visually, um, you know, look like them for success. If that's maybe something that we could add on to our academic performance report that we get every year. I think that would be, uh, uh, that way we get it consistently and we can see our progress in that area. I also want to remind people, and certainly we've done more reporting, Dr. Davis academically across subgroups. A lot of, we also have, uh, shown and demonstrated growth in social, uh, the, the social emotional health of students. We talked about feeding students. We've talked about, um, a, a huge program that we have in mental health assessment for our students and access to resources, uh, lots of other supports that we've added for students so that they can be successful. They don't always get reflected in some of our core academics, but are critical to, uh, to the performance of our students. And also, um, you know, we talked, Dr. Davis, about the job that you do and that your staff do, uh, does. And I want to really just kind of came to me in this slide that the enormity of the operations of the district. Academics is our core reason why we're here. But when we look at the food services and we look at bus drivers and we look at, um, the facilities and we look at all of the other components of our district, there's a massive operations component that you oversee in this district in order to ensure that our students are here, that facilities are there, operating, that we have the right security staff, that we have the right, um, uh, the right supports in place. And so I don't want that to be overlooked in the enormity of, of what managing this district is about. And the, the enormous responsibility of between our over $300 million budget and our $468 million bond. I like to remind people and, and Dr. Miley doesn't like it when I say it this way, but essentially we are i- in my mind, a billion dollar entity. I mean, there, there is a lot of responsibility in managing facilities, managing bonds and the finances of the district. Along with the, the staff component, which is about teaching and learning, but it is still a operational component. And so there's, it's an enormous job. We are the fifth largest school district in the state. We're the largest non countywide school district in the state. And so I want people to, just to understand, you know, we sit in these board meetings and we have a small group typically here, but we, we all represent an enormous responsibility in this district. So Dr. Davis, you and your staff, I appreciate the work that you all do every day to make sure that that all, that that all comes together, um, so that we can do the things we need to do. I know, uh, I was working with Will on a, on a light that was out, um, you know, one of our speed limit lights that was out in the neighborhood. I mean, it goes down to that level of making sure batteries are in the signs. It's a lot of work. So thank you for all that y'all do. With that, we will move on to the military community liaison report, Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Mr. Chair and members of the board and to our viewing public and our public that is in attendance. We have Ms. Kelsey Carter, who is our military liaison, who will come to us and provide us, um, with a report from the, from, from the military connected students perspective. Skart has done a phenomenal job as servant as a military liaison. And I'm gonna ask her on the fly to do an even better job of reducing her report. Cause as I have perused it, it's roughly 28 slides and I don't think the board has to, um, pallet.
I'm gonna try to be brief.
So please be brief.
I will try my best. Um, and just to follow up with what you were just saying, when I talk about military students, I bring much joy. So it's hard to be brief when you're talking with, you know, with, with a lot of joy. To the vice chair and members of the board, uh, Dr. Davis and Dr. Franklin. My name is Kelsey Carter. I serve as our district's military community liaison. And I am excited to share with you this evening briefly again, all of the supports, how we are continuing to, let me make sure my clicker is working. Yes. Is it working, Tony? Do I have it on? Here we go. There we go. How we are continuing to provide military connected students and families with premier, and I emphasize premier support services, resources, referrals in concordance with our Purple Star requirements. And so what we know about Fort Jackson is that we have a, a very long history and connection with Fort Jackson. As a matter of fact, in the early sixties, the executive branch of the federal government and armed forces installations became directly involved in school desegregation laws and policies. Richland County allowed the Department of Health, Education and Welfare to withdraw a small number of, uh, military children to create at Fort Jackson, one of the state's first integrated elementary schools. And it would soon be an example of how successful integration is modeled, uh, for schools outside of the base. So I just wanted to share that little bit of history and there's a lot of history as we continue to look at the changes. It's how Fort Jackson is integrated. And we continue to work with Fort Jackson as a partner, one of our strong partners with their EEOC division at Fort Jackson as we support their cultural events and programs, uh, through our Department of, uh, uh, diversity, equity and inclusion. And so in the state of South Carolina, we represent 20.3% of military families. And that's pretty significant. Okay. 20.3% of our military families are Richland, Richland School District too. With our students, we represent 20.5% of all military connected students in the state of South Carolina. And that puts us as the highest number of military students and families in the entire state, which is quite significant. And we oftentimes think about military students. We don't think about the ones that are deployed, the families that are deployed and the families that have to deal with deaths and wounded. And so within the last year, I wanted to share this slide to give you an idea of how many families that we have actually deployed. 340, uh, within the past year have been, uh, deployed as well as 18 deaths. And 166, somebody said, wow, yes, 166 wounded within the last year. And so the supports of our LSAS team, our social workers and our counselors and our psychologists and our, and our MFLX, our military family life consultants that are within our schools, uh, to support these families when they're going through these types of crises is very, very important. And, you know, the fact that we are, we have the largest number of military families and students, uh, is befitting of us to be the first district to receive the Purple Star designation back in 2019. And so I commend Dr. Davis for, um, you know, having a sense of urgency to make this designation happen. And we were the first district to meet those requirements. And what we would know is like some seven months later, COVID would hit, right? And so that designation gave us a platform to be able to support our military connected students, uh, you know, and, and their needs. And there are six components of the Purple Star, uh, designation. One is the dedicated liaison, which is the position that I hold. Uh, we also have to have in place a student ambassador program, a student led student ambassador program. And I could share a little bit about that later. And then educational planning, which encompasses the MIC three. MIC three is a Military Interstate Children Compact Commission. And what that is, that's the compact deals with, uh, the challenges of military children that have frequent relocations, right? And it allows for what we call a uniform treatment of these students. When they're moving from, uh, other countries or from state to state, that we are making sure that we, you know, we support those students and their courses, course requirements, and we keep them on track for graduation. In addition to that is our extracurricular activities. Oftentimes when students move to our district, um, they move when we've already had tryouts or, you know, or, or chorus, chorus and band tryouts. And so we make sure that we give those students an opportunity, you know, to try out for those extracurriculars. We have an amazing communications team. Uh, they make sure that we have an updated and a family friendly website. So, uh, our military families can go onto the website, register with no hiccups, you know, and, and have a family friendly way of, of, uh, getting information. And then we provide school training, just professional development for our counselors and for our frontline staffs, um, to support our Purple Star designation. And so we continue to build and maintain strong partnerships. Again, I credit Dr. Davis for making sure those partnerships are strong. You talked about community as being our, our, you know, lifeline, which is very important. We have so many, uh, folks in our community that help us support our military students, like our, the chamber, our chamber friends. Again, the installation, uh, other neighboring districts that support us, the, um, um, Veterans Affairs, the South Carolina Military Task Force Commission, all support us in, in, in taking care of our military connected students. And Mr. Henley, Fred Henley, I know he's out here somewhere. He never misses the board. He never misses a board meeting. Uh, Fred Henley is our school liaison officer and he and I work very closely together. Working many different cases for our military families. And so we said goodbye to General Beagle, as you all know, back in June, who was incredible. And, uh, and now we have ushered in and welcomed, um, General Patrick Talis, who is also very excited about continuing that partnership. I've had an opportunity to speak with him. So it's Dr. Davis. We met him during, uh, uh, the, um, change of command. I've had a chance to talk to his wife. She's excited about working with us and coming to our schools and reading to our students. And so we're, you know, we're gonna continue this partnership for sure. One of the things that I wanted to share quickly that Mr. Henley and I are working on, among the many things that we're working on that I think is significant to talk about tonight is, uh, providing more social and emotional supports for our military connected families. And so we're doing that in two ways. Okay. We're working on two initiatives. The Student to Student Program, also youth sponsorship program. And that's the program that, uh, Mr. Henley and I are working on together. Um, and we're this, we're working through this program through a grant that we call the Whole Child Initiative Grant, uh, by Dr. Bakutis. She's created this incredible grant for 15 DODA schools. So we're going into these schools and we're providing this training, uh, for our students and for our staff. And just a little bit about the, uh, youth sponsorship program. The program is a collaboration among school liaison officers, youth programs and school age center staffs. It's an outreach services program and it's birthed at Fort Jackson. So it's an army based program, but we are connecting and sharing that with our students. And this is just pictures, all the pictures that you see are pictures of our students and our staff. So these are some of our students that have been trained. And again, these are some of the areas that this program, um, looks at. And one of the keys to this program is that we connect with these students before they even get here. So if you have a student in Germany or Japan, we can connect with them before they even get here. So when they land here in our district, we've already made those connections. We've already given them opportunities to make friends, to find connections and build that sense of belonging. And so, you know, what we know about military kids is that they move between kindergarten and high school six to nine times. People oftentimes say that military children say goodbye more time, you know, as, as a child, uh, before they grow up. How many, then we say in a lifetime, they say goodbye so many times. So we have to keep these things in mind that we know these children bring so much depth and culture and experiences to their, to our schools. But we also have to be mindful that they also bring high rates of mental health and struggles and the transition is difficult. So we need to be in place, as we are, to support these students to the best of our ability. And the other program that I mentioned really quick, quickly was our Student to Student Program. We have partnered with MSEC, the acronym is Military Child Education Coalition. We partnered with them. We received a scholarship last year to train, uh, six schools. Uh, and these schools were selected primarily because they weren't a part of the DODA schools. And these schools also have high numbers of military connected students. So we selected these schools. They received training last year. Here are a few of the pictures that we, um, took during the training. It was actually right here in this room. These are trainers from Tennessee, from Texas. Students from Spring Valley were trained, students from Westwood were trained. And so these students will go back into their schools and support new military connected students. And to date, went to Westwood a week ago, 25 more students are now being trained. Cause these students have like train to trainer program. We have 25 more that are gonna be a part of this program as well. So I'm excited about that. Okay. I'm trying to talk fast. And I, I can't, I have to mention this because, um, one of the partnerships, we have both internal partnerships and external partnerships. And one of the partnerships that I'm very proud of is our partnership with Human Resources, uh, trying to create a pipeline to bring in more military spouses, right, for employment. We need bus drivers, we need teachers, right? So why not use our military spouses who are coming here and connecting with them before they even get here? So that they have a job when they land. And so I always tell my own personal story. When we moved here as a military family, I didn't have a job. I needed a job. Richland too, gave me an opportunity to be a substitute teacher. I started off there and then I moved into a long-term substitute teacher position and now I'm here. Okay? And so, you know, that's, that's, I'm very excited about that, but it works, you know? So we need to, to, to pull more military spouses in and get them, um, employment. Another program that we're working on internally is, uh, with, uh, Dr. Otasha Morgan. She's, um, put together, uh, R2 aims, which I'm super, super excited about. It's an opportunity to have more mentors for our students. Students need mentors. What better pool to pull mentors from than the military community? And so we have about a dozen soldiers, um, veterans, uh, folks in the military community who are already on board and ready to be a part of this program. And so really quickly, I wanted to just touch upon COVID. You know, when COVID hit, we answered the call. We had this platform. We already, you know, we're doing great things. But we had that platform as a Purple Star district also in addition, you know, to that, to, to go in and to provide military supports during COVID. And so one of the things I always like to brag about is our IT team stepped to the plate. Fort Jackson called us and say, hey, we're having some difficulty getting students connected on their Chromebooks. And called Mr. Kramer, he says, we got you, deliver hotspots to Fort Jackson so that those students can get online. You know, this is just one example of some of the great things that we're doing in terms of our partnership. Dr. Davis always says, if, if you can't, they can't come to you, you go to them. And so when we're talking about. And so when we're talking about community, we're talking about our lifeline, oftentimes I will go to their homes, as you can see here, welcoming our new families purple star fashion. I think this was in the parking lot of the YMCA, I believe, or somewhere. But these are our families that we come, I deliver backpacks, food, whatever they might, they might need. And so I'm trying to get through quickly. We are also on a national scene, and I have to mention that, that I've been able to represent our district in several Purple Star virtual town hall meetings to talk about where we are three years later as a model district, as we, you know, talk about what Purple Star does and how our families are benefiting from it. Mr. Henley and I have also done a number of conferences as we also are model district when it comes to building strong relationships with your installation. So people wanted to know how you guys do that? How do you, you know, build these installations and districts and make them so strong? Okay, all right. So I'm talking real fast. All right. So Department of Defense Education Activity DODA, we're continuing our DODA initiatives. We're doing those meetings dual modality. We're continuing to support our military-connected students when it comes to the Military Month of the Military Child, which is in April. Excited about that. We know back in 2020, we were doing everything pretty much virtual. People were sending in their pictures of their dogs and everything and supporting us in purple. And now last year, we were able to come back in person. And I'm gonna tell you, in the district office, it's like a sea of purple. We had purple blazers. We had people just, and Dawn McAdams actually dyed her hair purple. So that's her commitment, her dedication. So, you know, we, we're continuing to show our support in a tremendous way for our military families. So we've always done that. And we're, you know, certainly in making that even more profound. And earlier this, this month, as we, you know, remember 20 years of 9/11, we were able to bring in a couple of Marines. And they spoke to students at Blythewood High School, Blythewood Middle School, I'm sorry, and telling their story about where they were and, you know, how significant 911 was to them. We also did a survey here in the district office, and we had over 70 responses. We asked people to talk about what 911 meant to them and how it impacted their lives, and that was very powerful. So we have that. And we're just doing a lot of stuff. I can do more, I can say more, but I'm trying to get through this. And I appreciate your time and allowing me to share with you briefly what we're doing here. And I wanted to just have this slide here, just to give you a general idea of just some of the feedback that we get on a regular basis from military families, from our partners, just letting us know how much they appreciate having that support for military families. And, and you got your little bags, and so in your bags, you also have, you got yourself. We also included in our Department of, Division of Equity and Inclusion, some, I think we did a bookmark, right, Dr. Grant? Of Hispanic Heritage Month. I think Dr. Davis was talking about 12% of our population is Hispanic. So we're kicking off Hispanic Heritage Month in a big fashion. So be on the lookout of those advertisements. And I appreciate your support. I welcome any questions that you might have, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Board members, questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And first of all, thank you, Ms. Carter, for your passion. As a former military wife, thank you for serving those families. And I can attest to the fact, as my husband was an Army brat, we are here in Columbia forever because he is not moving again. With that said, I also wanted to share that I did meet Mrs. McHaleys last week, the CG's wife, and she's ready to come and read. She assured me of that. But just going back to one of your slides, the deployment statistics. We had 18 students lose a parent. I just got goosebumps. That's just really sad. Well. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mackey, you had your.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, first of all, that I'm impressed. You got through 38 slides like it was, like it was five slides. I'm impressed. But just thank you for all that that department does. I remember when I was a parent, when I'm still a parent, but when I was a parent of two high schoolers. And at that time, that high school had the highest population, I know, of military students. And I think about all of the resources that were available then, and they were good. And this is amazing, the resources that are available. And I know you didn't include everything here because you couldn't. So for the, the resources that are available for our military families and to see where we've come, just in that, you know, eight years ago or so, I'm just very appreciative. So thank you for all that you do. I know it's a lot. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Dr. Scott?
Ms. Carter, just wanted to say thank you so much. That was an outstanding presentation. And I don't think in all my nine years on the school board that we've had someone that come in your position with so much passion and dedication. So thank you for what you do for the military families, because they do matter. So thank you for what you and Mr. Henley does. Really appreciate both of you. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other comments from board members? Oh, I figured Dr. Caution Parker. Yeah.
As, as an Army brat, the daughter of an Army drill sergeant, and the granddaughter of a military man serving in World War II, and an uncle serving in World War I, I can attest to the moving around every two or three years. I think when I moved to Columbia, South Carolina, C. Johnson was my third high school in, in two and a half years. So I can attest to how difficult it is for families. And I know when we moved to Vermont, that's, this is it, we moved no more. And we stayed, and my father served two tours in Vietnam during that time. So, but he used to always say, what you do, you just look up and you march forward with dignity and respect, and you make the best out of situations. And what you all are doing here, my sisters and I would have thrived if all this was going on during the time we moved. That's just phenomenal. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. Other comments? Thank you. I also had the opportunity to meet General McHaleys.
You met him already?
I got to meet, meet him and his wife. Great people, a great opportunity. It's, I think it's a real privilege for us to, to be the partner with the Ford for education and all the opportunities. So thank you. It's amazing. I think they said they graduate over 48,000 folks every year, and we train more women than any other Army base or any other military base.
It is the largest training base in the nation, yes.
That's, yeah, what an amazing opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We will move on to 10.3, an update on capital improvements. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, and members of the board. We have Mr. Anderson Will Anderson, our chief for operations and logistics, provide us with an update this evening regarding capital improvements. Mr. Anderson?
Good evening. I'll try to go as fast as Ms. Carter. I don't know if my drywall roofs and painting is gonna be as exciting, but I'll do my very best. So again, you all got a comprehensive update in your board packet along with more detail about certain projects. So this will be a quick update from last month's meeting in August, based on what we've done since last month. So in the last month, we did this first, we did the first meeting of August, so we have had the ribbon cutting and games at RNAE in Ridgeview. We're finishing the punch list there on some minor lighting and some other projects, but excited for those stadiums. You know, we've had some good games, and we thank you all for being there for those opportunities. Blythewood High School, substantial completion is done there. We're still waiting a couple of punch list items and landscaping, but we are almost done and furniture and everything's in, just waiting for the last little thing to move those students in those new facilities. The Ridgeview Auditorium, we kind of talked all about the Ridgeview Stadium, Auditorium Edition, and the HVAC in the hallways, and all the things we've done there is, is done as well. So if you hadn't had a chance to go see the auditorium, it's phenomenal, the additions and the, the work there. And so we're happy that's done. And since the last meeting, Cotabatrow and Langford is under minor construction there. Wanted to give you updates on our, on some of our major construction and projects going on. So you can see Bethel Hambury here. We'll be in the dry, meaning all the roofs will be on by October. Overhead inspections will begin on the main building and in the back portion there, looking at all the fire, fire, water, mechanical, and other systems that are in place before they start putting ceiling tile up. So that project's doing really well. This is the front view of the school. The top right is the media center. All that blank space is storefront or glass, so you can see a nice view that overlooks the woods there. And then you can see here, that bottom picture is the second store, second floor, where you can get more natural light coming into the classroom space. E.L. Wright and CFK is progressing really well also. You can see here, the three, the new main corridor, main building is, is up with masonry work starting now around the building and the science building A1. You can see the classroom building B1, the law building, and the gym. It will continue moving to your, the photo right as we, they're doing the foundations and footings for the admin area and the media center and cafeteria. That's starting now, and then there'll be, once that's done, we'll move in this summer, and then we'll move into CFK after that. You're gonna get an idea of a couple of views there. You can see your bottom right picture of the foundations and footings, and then you can see on the top right what the, some of the corridors look like in the building. Forest Lake, again, moving along really well. This is a, this project is block as opposed to the steel frames as Bethel Hambury and E.L. Wright. So while the block work is, is going a little slower than the steel, the walls are already up in those buildings. So it's a little different not putting up the drywall, et cetera. Again, moving on target now that we've gotten some dry weather, they're really knocking it out. And so been on site of all these three in the last week, and really excited at the progress we're seeing there. You can kind of get an idea of the media, the multipurpose and cafeteria at the bottom. The gym is the big, gym roof is on, and so we're making good progress at Forest Lake. Since our last meeting, we have, we have started to really hone in more on the interiors of the Performing Arts Center. As you remember, we had our design team come and speak about some of the Performing Arts Center. Just to give you a reference, that's our, what our exterior looks like. And then the bottom picture under the exterior is the lobby area. We then centered our focus onto the actual performance space. So you can kind of get an idea of what the interior performance space will look like through these renderings. So very excited about this really coming into fruition, as Dr. Davis stated, stated construction will start on that project here, end of this year into the first of 2022, with it opening in 2023. LW Conder, you can kind of get the rendering of what that looks like there. We're, again, construction is scheduled for the winter, early 2022. That is the new multipurpose addition, as long as additions and renovations to the cafeteria. So you can see, that is in the back of the school, what that would look like with a new high space for that arts school and really have a very nice performance space, multipurpose space for that addition, for that school. Very excited to get this, these plans up and running. You can see the additions, the ones in color for the board, I'm sorry, are the additions. And you can see a more detailed look at those on, on the plans. Joseph Keels, again, we have this multipurpose cafeteria addition. You can see what the renderings of that looks like. What I really like about Keels is that's, that's, this would be the view as you're coming down Park Lane Road. So now as you're looking past the library, you kind of got a look of an older 60s-era school, and you've got a really nice new kind of, it's not, we're gonna have a big signage and update the front entrance, but it really gives you a, a really, a nice view of the school and a nice needed space. We've met with both school faculty and staff, and they're, they want it to be done today, but they're, they're super excited about these additions at, at both of these schools. As you remember, we're still on time with our budget. Our budget's looking great, and we're still, our timeline of projects is still going smoothly. So you can see there where we've expended, what we expended today, what we currently have encumbered. That large number is primarily to those three large additions, and then currently our remaining balance. Cost is still not stabilized. I mentioned this in August, so we're still waiting to see what happens. Steel prices are still up and down. Labor market is getting a little tighter, but not have impact. For example, we had 75 masons at Forest Lake Elementary School last week, which is phenomenal. So doing really well in there. No impacts on our current projects on timeline. They're all scheduled to be completed on time. We will be advertising our Phase Two projects in November, and so it'd be a similar project process as it went through in 2018. Be happy to talk with all you, again, at a later session or provided any questions on how that process will work. And I know Ms. McFadden was not available for that, or was on the board at that time. Be happy to give her more information. But that'll be architects, and then CMRIS for the remaining 23 projects with the design, once we get those hired, hoping to start the design work in early 2022. And as always, all of this information is on our website as Ms. Ruth and I work today to update that, and we hope to have it more up to date in October. With that, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Board members, questions, comments? Dr. Miley?
He was complaining that his booster shot hurt his arm, so he had to go home.
We'll give him that. Somebody else can, I think, Shelley, you could probably answer this. We're still on track with the bond. We have not increased the debt mileage, right? We're still zero increase to debt mileage with the bond work, which is a promise we made to the public and one that I'm happy that we're, we're able to, to maintain. So no, no increased taxes to cover it.
Yep. Zero, we, we were promised in 2018 was not for the first year, and that was in 2019, and now it's 2021, and we've not raised the mill any, zero mills, and we're moving into 2022. So kudos to our finance team for all the work they've done, and our, our bond advisors and everybody else.
Yeah, thank you for that work.
That's really, really good stuff.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Yep. All right. Item 10.4, policy revision proposal, policy FF, naming new facilities. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, and to our public. We have our deputy superintendent, Dr. Marshall and Franklin, who will revisit policy FF naming of new facilities for the board.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Mr. Manning, members of the board. At the August 24th board meeting, the board reviewed policy FF and naming new facilities. Members of the board share thoughts regarding the policy with specific attention to the portion of the policy that addresses naming a facility for individuals. District administration presents a draft revision of policy FF for your consideration, recommending that there be a change regarding, thank you, naming facilities in memory of deceased individuals. The current policy stipulates, in very unusual situations, names of persons who have been deceased for more than 10 years may be considered as possible names for facilities. District administration recommends changing the stipulation to three or more years.
Thank you. Board members?
Mr. Vice Chair.
Dr. Scott?
Just one question, just for clarity. I know it stated that facilities could be named after someone if they gave a substantial amount of money to the district. Do you have that amount or know that amount, or maybe could provide that later?
No, I don't have that. What substantial would be? Dr. Davis?
I think it's in policy or it's either in administrative rule what the actual, what the actual amount is. And depending on the facility, so whether it's a stadium, a gymnasium, or something like that, it's specific to the actual facility and the amount.
Can you send that to us?
I think it's in, I think it's in administrative rule of this policy.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, I was just gonna comment. I flipped to that administrative rule, and it is there. Thank you.
Thank you. You want to share with us what it is? And you're there?
It's a chart. It's a chart based upon, like Dr. Davis had said, based upon, you know, elementary school, middle school, scholarship, magnet programs, they're all different categories.
I got you, okay.
It's a long list.
Thank you, Ms. Augustine. All right. Other comments, questions? Thank you very much. We will now move on to policy review, policy BEDC quorum. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Franklin will remain and share this policy with the board and community as well. Dr. Franklin?
Policy BEDC quorum defines the minimum number of board members required to be in attendance for the board to conduct business. And it was requested that we bring this policy up for discussion of the board.
Board members, questions or comments? Dr. Caution Parker?
I have a question. Like I said before, back in early 2000s, there was an issue on the board, and no, no one on the board now was there, was on the board at that time, regarding a quorum as opposed four, as opposed to five. And it was a big discussion, I think it changed in 2003. Yeah, 2003. And, and I cannot for the life of me remember what exactly that policy stated at that time. Do we have any way of looking back or going back to check that?
We can't think we can check with the School Boards Association to see what our version was.
Okay, yeah, I'd, I'd like, I'd like to, to see that.
Dr. Scott, did you have a comment?
Well, just for clarity, looking up here, this policy was last revised in August of 2017 to the five members for quorum.
So yes, it was a part of our massive review of the board policy manual. I'm not exactly sure which portion of the policy was changed in 2017, but there was something that was revised in 2017.
Other board members, Ms. Agostini?
Thank you. And just in reference to the number of five, that was, I, I looked back and the five was in the quorum. As, and as Dr. Caution Parker had said, it was changed probably in 2003. I do not know that, but it was already in when we made this revision. But I do support the policy as it stands.
Other board members?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Mackey?
I, I suggest that the, from four to five, that there are, that there be the maximum number of board members possible in order to conduct the business of a board meeting. The more, if, if it's four people, if there are seven members on the board, and there are four people, that should constitute a quorum. I just never want to be in a situation where we can voluntarily hold hostage the just, the, the business of a board meeting.
Dr. Scott?
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, I would love to see the policy remain as it is. I think it's always great when there is an odd number when we're voting on matters, and therefore it can't be a select group that can determine whether or not meetings go on, but the majority of the school board, and I think five would be the majority of that. So I'd like to see it remain as is.
I, I would like to make a comment. One, our policy is in conflict with state law. FOIA states that a majority is a simple majority of the board, not, not beyond that. So for that reason, I would certainly like to see it be changed to bring us in line with FOIA and state requirements. Secondly, just an observation, having been on the board for the period of time I have, we, we have had some very close calls in the past, having five board members present at a meeting. We've had some meetings delayed while the fifth person shows up, especially sometimes for special call meetings. And so it, it, it has put us in potentially precarious positions. But beside that, we do have instances where super majority of the board is required to have certain events. I, I would recommend that if the board feels that we need to have a, beyond the FOIA requirement of a simple majority, that we determine what those actions are that would require a super majority. In fact, there are things we do, we know that we have to have two thirds of the board. Dr. Davis's contract has clauses that require super majority of the board. So we have instances where we can designate beyond the simple majority for actions to be taken.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Ms. Agostini?
It's my understanding, and I could be wrong with the FOIA recommendation, that the minimum requirement would be four, for a board of seven. I do need to recheck that. And as you commented about the special called board meetings and getting off to a late start because people are tardy, perhaps if there were a survey or the board was asked, and we could develop a time that was convenient for all, perhaps we wouldn't fall into that circumstance of not having board members available for special called board meetings. And I'm not saying emergency meetings, special called board meetings, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Mackey?
Mr. Chair, I, I definitely want to do the research that would put us in compliance with law, and it doesn't matter which four board members are here or five, whatever, just don't. The decisions that we make are not individual decisions. The decisions that we make have to do with the business of the board, have to do with finances, have to do with students, student appeals, and, and, and receiving information regarding COVID pandemic. I just never want to see us in a position where we can strategically make sure that a board meeting doesn't go on. So whatever we have to do to make sure that we are in line with law and, and can get that research, that information, I would be certainly amenable to that.
All right, other discussion? Okay, any questions from staff? Okay, thank you very much. We'll now move on to item 11 dot one, the draft agenda items for October 12th, 2021. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board. For our board meeting scheduled for October the 12th, it's a regular scheduled board meeting. That regular scheduled board meeting will be here, will be held here at R2I2 with the call of order in executive session beginning at 5:30. Our executive session item as of today is stated as student appeals, student admissions to the district's adult education program. We will come out of executive session where we will then ask for the inspirational moment and the pledge of allegiance, followed by the approval of the agenda and consent agenda, our very first public participation. Then we'll have items, voting items in executive session, which will be our student appeals and student admissions, admissions requests into the district's adult education program at this time. Our unfinished business will be the policy revision approval for policy FF naming new schools. We'll have also new business, no action request will be the approval of a bond refunding resolution, as well as the superintendent's report from the, regarding the superintendent's highlights. We'll add agenda items for the next board meeting, which is scheduled, draft agenda items for the October the 26th, 2021 board meeting. Approval of those agenda items, our second public participation, followed by our board and superintendent comments. Executive session number two, if needed, voting on items in executive session two if it's held, and then we'll ask for an adjournment. Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, that constitutes the draft agenda for the October the 12th, 2021 regular scheduled board meeting.
Board members, any comments or questions? All right, we'll now move on to approval of the draft agenda. If I can have a motion, please.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Mackey?
I move to approve the draft agenda for the October 12th, 2021 regular board meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey, do have a second. Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll take the vote. Motion passes unanimously. Second public participation, we have no one signed up, so I will move on to board and superintendent comments. I'm going to start at my left with Dr. Scott.
Everyone, have a great night. Thank you for coming out.
Ms. McFadden?
No comment, have a good evening.
Ms. Agostini?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for all those that presented tonight, and also those that came to speak publicly. At this time, I'm going to take the opportunity to ask the questions. I don't need answers, but the questions that I was not, or that I was prohibited from asking when we had a call to vote at our meeting, and I actually had been recognized by the board chair. But board members were out of order, and then there was a call to vote, and I was not re-recognized. So I was not able to participate in the discussion. So questions that I had.
Excuse me, Ms. Agostini, will you clarify if that's this meeting or a previous meeting?
Excuse me, it was at the September 22nd meeting when we were doing, thank you for asking that, at, when we were discussing the superintendent's contract, and I was not permitted to ask questions. So thank you for clarifying that. So a, as it pertains to the contract, I went through different contracts to make sure that we were in line with what the contracts say. And the first questions that I'm going to ask, I was going to ask our lawyer, but I was not allowed to have a private conversation. It had to be an executive session. At that point, I said, I'll wait until we come to the general session so the community can hear my questions. The first one was talking about in the 2019 contract, organize and assign all personnel as best serves the district, subject to the approval of the board. So does that mean reassignments too? Does that need to be voted on by the board? Shall promptly refer all substantiated criticisms, complaints, and suggestions called to the board's attention to the superintendent. Does that mean that even if the board member gets a anonymous complaint, should that be addressed? In the 2016 contract, it's page two, the bottom of the line, or bottom of the page, the superintendent agrees to devote his time, skill, labor, and attention to set employment during the term of this contract. Provided however, the superintendent may undertake various professional duties and obligations, including writing, lecturing, and speaking engagements. The board should be provided with notice of any such commitments, which may require in, or involve a significant time commitment. My question in looking at his statement of economic interest that was filed this year is, are we within our means, should it be our responsibility to inquire about other employment activities as marked at NeoGenesis, the University of South Carolina?
Ms. Agostini?
Cumberland University?
Ms. Agostini?
Along with the dates, times, and locations of speaking engagements.
Ms. Agostini? I, I understand your need to have the questions answered. I think it's unfair, though, to ask questions in a format that there's not an opportunity to respond, that...
Mr. Vice Chair, with all due respect, you are the one that called the vote when I was going to be asking these questions. You are the one that stopped the discussion. So at this point, I am taking my closing remarks to share with people what my questions were.
And I understand your need to have them asked. I just think it's unfair to do it in a format where there's not an opportunity.
These are rhetoric. I will send them in and have our attorney answer them, but I want the public to know what I had intended to ask Kathy Mahoney. But again, you called the vote, and I wasn't permitted to continue to ask my questions. So those are the contract questions. In terms of what was put before us, I wanted to confirm that the superintendent had already received the 2% step increase that all of our employees got for the 2020, 2021 year. That was retroactive to include the 2% increase for the 2021, 2022 step increase. A comment that was of concern to me, we were going to give an additional 4% increase, and I heard from some of my colleagues in order to retain our superintendent, but yet we were going to give an 18-month buyout because that's how long it takes. And so somehow that doesn't mesh with me that we need to spend so much money to retain a superintendent because he won't, because we don't want to lose him because he's so sought after, but yet it's going to take somebody 18 months to find a job. Now, my final concern would be...
Ms. Agostini?
I'm not finished, Mr. Vice Chair.
I understand, there, there needs to be some reasonableness in the time of the comment. And as well, I would say that we also have a board policy that says once a board decision is made, that we will uphold, uphold the decision of the board. You're, you're rehashing issues from a previous board meeting upon which decisions have already been made.
Mr. Chair, I wasn't permitted at that time.
Is a board, we uphold the board decision once the decision is made.
Well, I wasn't able to ask my questions. So I will just finish up with, after our August 10th meeting, where I did not support the superintendent's evaluation, I had said that I had a trust issue. I went to the legal counsel meeting, and they said, you need to lay it out and then let it go. I've had so many phone calls and emails wanting to know what my trust issues are. Perhaps you can see from tonight, I virtually made the same motion that I made at the August 20, wherever the first meeting where we were going to have the separate September 14th meeting to postpone a vote and to remove an item. Immediately, our superintendent said, you can't amend a main motion. There was no objection tonight. Then it was said that it wasn't germane. Well, it was relevant. So along with that, in May of 20, on May 25th, when I asked a question about why we were hiring a part-time position person, we were told the person retired. No, the person already retired. If we had been told that their contract had not been renewed, that would have been a different story.
Now we're getting into HR issues that are not purview to the public domain. I, I would ask that we please uphold it.
People are wondering why I don't trust, and when we ask these questions publicly, we're not getting the correct answers. And I have asked telephonically questions. I mean, the reason why I don't trust him, again, I'll go back to, and Mr. Vice Chair, you're familiar with this, on September 24th, 2019, and this is where the trust was really lost. In a phone conversation to the superintendent, superintendent stated multiple times he had no idea who authorized Richland to employees to carry firearms as it pertains to policy GBEB. We were voting on that policy or having a discussion that night. I called to ask who authorized it. A number of times, I was told, I have no idea from our superintendent. I got the 20-minute discussion in terms of the background of why people did carry it, but he had no idea who had authorized our employees currently.
Ms. Agostini, again, I understand your, I understand what you're trying to accomplish, but this is also not fair to the superintendent because he is not in a format where he can answer your questions. This is, if, if we want to have debate about the legitimacy of your concerns and questions, we're hearing from your point of view, but you're not given an opportunity. As we all know, in every argument or situation, there are three sides, your side, the other side, and the truth. And I think that you are being unfair.
Thank you, thank you for telling me that I'm being unfair because this is one of the first times that I'm being unfair here. And I've listened and watched to all of, watched almost everybody here be unfair and be inappropriate and unprofessional. So I will just close with this. After the September 24th discussion, I received an email, as did the rest of the board, with an authorization form with our superintendent's name on it. So he was not truthful in that because he had been signing contracts to let employees do that.
Ms. Agostini, I'm calling you out of order. The fact that you are, that you are maligning his character on truthfulness without an opportunity to respond is unbelievable.
You're well aware of this, these conversations, Mr. Vice Chair, because you sat in a meeting when we discussed it, and I'm finished.
Okay, first, I'd like to thank you for all the comprehensive reports this evening. As usual, a lot of information, a lot of good information, and I appreciate that. And I just want to say a few things. I'm just very proud of Richland School District Two and all that has been accomplished, especially during this very difficult pandemic. I think it's brought the worst out in some of us and the best out in some of us. Not, not either or, but, but a little bit of both, this whole pandemic. I commend you, Dr. Davis, Baron Davis, for your leadership and vision, your administrative staff, and all of our employees for keeping our children first and foremost. That's what we're about. We're about the kids, the kids. No kids, no district. We're about the kids. And I think that we need to keep that in mind as we move forward in making decisions. And that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Ms. Mackey?
Thank you for everyone who's, who's stayed here, for those who've got to be here and those who choose to be here tonight as we share information. The main thing is, the main thing, that's the main thing, is that there's a pandemic, and we are trying to educate children in the light of that. Dr. Davis, I pray you never treat your employees the way that you have been treated publicly. I pray that there are principals who never treat their teachers this way. I pray that there are teachers who never treat their students this way. There's a way to talk to people, there is a way to treat people, there is a thing called decorum. So I hope that everyone in this room and who is listening will practice kindness and professionalism and decorum. And the people who occupy these seats, who occupy the schools, who occupy the classrooms are human. These people have humans, the people that you're working with are humans. So to berate someone or to treat someone, I, I just, it, it breaks my heart. And I hope that no one in, in District Two has ever treated that way publicly, no less. I'm sorry that you had to endure that. But for everyone who's here tonight, thank you for being here, and be safe. God bless you.
Thank you, Dr. Davis.
I am, I, I've struggled with the words that I present today to my community, to my employees, to everyone in this district. I've been an educator now since 1999. I've never experienced what I've experienced tonight. An assault, a public assault, an attempt to demean, demote my character. I think we are all fully aware of the power of words in our, as adults. I think we are all aware that some people's words, depending on their position, their station in life, and who they are, carry significant power. And as a result, we have significant responsibility on how we conduct ourselves. A part of our board policy, BCA, Board Member's Code of Ethics, states that board members should maintain desirable relationships with the superintendent of schools and his or her staff. And by doing so, there's a particular statement that says that you should strive to provide adequate safeguards... you should strive to provide adequate safeguards around the superintendent and other staff members to the end that they can live happily and comfortably in the community and discharge their educational functions on a thoroughly professional basis. There have been instances, as a superintendent, I've been asked questions that I don't know the answer to. And I've enthusiastically attempted to respond so that I can adequately provide information upon request. I've been wrong in some of my responses. I don't know everything as a superintendent. I don't know everything as a father. I don't know everything as a husband. But I attempt to do my very best. I attempt to lead a life in this community that demonstrates a high level of integrity and character professionalism, not because my job requires me to do so, because my faith requires me to do so. As a result of that, I always have realized that because of my position, because of who I am, that that will always be addressed and attacked in various forms. But I remain steadfast and committed to this wonderful district that I've been a part of since 1999 as an assistant administrator. A place that, when I was an assistant administrator, I never thought I would be the superintendent. And people would ask me about that. Mr. Manning could attest to that. I never thought that I would be the superintendent, but somebody had to be the first. And along with that comes certain responsibilities and certain challenges. So I had to accept the crown and the cross and wear them both as proudly as I can. I'll do that. My grandmother used to say to me when I was young, something that was very powerful and something that today resonates with me. It was from 1 Corinthians 16, 13 and 14, and it simply says, be on your guard, stand firm in faith, be courageous, be strong and do everything in love. I'll continue to lead and live that way, whether I'm here or somewhere else. So I'll stay mission focused for this district, which is to work in partnership with our students and our families to ensure that we are preparing and global citizens of tomorrow, citizens who are prepared to lead and excel in their chosen pathways. I'll be committed to that. I'll also remember to commit myself as I've asked everyone else to do, and that's a choice. Commit or recommit yourself to learning. What have you learned today and are you better for what you've learned? Character, your heart. You can't hide your character. No matter how hard you try, no matter how hard you dress it up, your character speaks for you. Your heart. Community, the lifeline. And I appreciate this community. I have a lot of love and a lot of support that I feel in the community. And I'm thankful for that and blessed for that. Thank you for being the lifeline of this district. And lastly, joy. Continuing to work to create conditions where joy can reside. I have to do that regardless of what takes place, regardless of what's said. I have to continue to work to create conditions of joy because that is the gift that we give each other, is working together to create those conditions. So I thank you all for being here. I thank you all for listening and I continue to thank you all and pray for you all as well. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. I mean, I would like to say that we did have a very positive, productive meeting tonight, which I thought was great. We've had a few, not so much here lately, but I thought tonight went well. We got a lot done. I appreciate the commitment of the board members to work with each other. People always have, when they speak, they're always trying to accomplish something. We had an individual up here that talked about one board member who doesn't use district email. He did not state there's more than one board member that doesn't use district email, but he left that part out because he was trying to accomplish a mission. And we have board members who are obviously obsessed in maligning not just the superintendent and his role, but the person, Dr. Davis, and who have made it a full-time job and commitment to do everything in their power. Going back, I mean, we're talking back to 2019 and still holding on to issues as if it was yesterday. My mission is to do what's right for the district. As I stated earlier, we are a billion-dollar entity. We have, we're the largest employer in the Midlands. We have students with needs. We talked about military, all the different needs. And we sit up here and dicker over something that somebody said. We've all been incorrect at times, as Dr. Davis has said. We've all by accident made misstatements or had to learn and grow in our positions. But we also have to learn to work with each other and to do what's right. And I do not see the comments that were made tonight, the lack of trust in Dr. Davis as an individual, who I can assure you his faith is very strong and that he would not intentionally lie, mislead or otherwise commit unethical behavior or leadership. I can promise you that. Nor would he in his role as the superintendent. His commitment to this district is strong and he wants what's truly the best. We all can disagree on the way to get there. And I think we do that often. I think that's a healthy conversation to disagree. But when it becomes personal attacks and it becomes a consistent, never-ending stream of personal attacks, a singular focus on undermining the work of the superintendent and the work of the board, it becomes unhealthy. I think that's where some people are. If I can have a motion to adjourn.
Chair, I move to adjourn.
Motion by Ms. Mackey to adjourn. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Please raise it high. We adjourn.